Pulling me to order, please rise. We can have a moment of silence, we can outdoor some prayers, our troops, our law enforcement, and all our emergency responders that they always return home safe. Thank you. Pledge?
I pledge allegiance to the United States of America and to the Republic of the Free State, one nation, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Notice that the open floor meetings, when I get some talk to the people who are in the meeting, is listed on the Middlesex County website, as well as on the board of the board in the Middlesex County administration building, and it has 48 hours of the meeting, which all members of the community should attend.
Roll call.
County Commissioner Ashford Barber.
Here.
County Commissioner Kenny. County Commissioner McCollum. County Commissioner Mahoney. County Commissioner Nara.
Here.
County Commissioner Tamara.
Here.
County Commissioner Director Rios.
Here. Is there a recognition?
Yes, first for claiming December 21st as homeless persons Memorial Day in Middlesex County, next for claiming December 1st, 2024, as World's eighth day in Middlesex County, and last recognizing the members of the Veterans of Foreign Wars Post 133.
Is there a motion to adopt both recognitions?
I believe so.
Is there a second?
Second.
Roll call.
County Commissioner Ashford Barber. Yes. County Commissioner Kenny. County Commissioner Mahoney.
Yes.
County Commissioner Nara.
Yes.
County Commissioner Tamara.
Yes.
County Commissioner Director Rios.
Yes. At this time, I would like to have come up the members of veterans, VFW Post 133. Gentlemen, I'm right up. We have a a resolution here passed by the Board of Free Home, Board of Commissioners, I'm sorry, in reference to what your organization has done through so many years in the community. And recently, in the in May, you had the Vietnam Traveling Wall, which is something that is so special. And our Commissioner Board has had a history of always having our veterans in our hearts and throats all the time, and making sure that we can do anything to try to make life easier for them and veterans, because you guys and women have done so much for our freedoms, and able to let us even meet here today and the other day. So we wanted to recognize you for the, for working on that and getting that traveling wall in East Brunswick this past summer, and for all that you do. So again, congratulations and thank you so much. Want to do a photo here? Would you like to say this?
On behalf of the Veterans of Foreign Wars, VFW Post 133 in East Brunswick, we're here tonight to thank Middlesex County for the dedication and everything they did in helping us bring the Vietnam Wall into East Brunswick. It was, it was a pleasure and an honor as a Vietnam veteran myself, and my friend Tony, we're both Vietnam veterans, we, we were so happy to be able to do this, it was an amazing thing, and East Brunswick Township was, helped us out, and Middlesex County really went overboard to help us, and we appreciate that, thank you so much.
As I like to show our appreciation to the county, we'd like to give a certificate of appreciation, and I'd like to read from it for all of it. It says, "For your ongoing support and dedication in organizing and displaying the Traveling Vietnam Memorial Wall from May 23rd through May 27th to 2024, your assistance and commitment have been instrumental in bringing this important tribute to our community. We extend our deepest gratitude for your pivotal role in honoring and preserving the memory of our fallen service members. Your efforts have left an indelible mark on our community and the legacy of those who made the ultimate sacrifice. Thank you for your attention, generosity, and service." What we'd like to do also is, we were fortunate to have someone donate a lot of flags that helped us to decorate the whole facility. And I'd like to read from the card that's on the back. It says, "This flag was flown at the Traveling Vietnam Memorial Wall in East Brunswick, New Jersey, May 23rd through May 27th, 2024, and would like to present it to Director Rios on behalf of the county."
I could tell you this, that we will, this is, this is an honor, a true honor for our board, and you know, we always have veterans at heart, we love our veterans, and we're grateful for what you guys do, and this will certainly, we'll put this in our conference room. Commissioners, how's that sound? Right? Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you very much. Do you have correspondence?
Each Commissioner has been provided with a list of correspondence received by the clerk's office in our last meeting. This correspondence will have to unfollow the office's deferment order.
Is there a motion to accept the correspondence? Move.
Second.
On favor?
Aye.
Close. Motion carries. Minutes are affordable.
Minutes of the regular meeting held Monday, November 18th, 2024 at 6:30 p.m.
Is there a motion to approve the minutes?
Second.
Roll call.
County Commissioner Ashford Barber.
Yes.
County Commissioner Kenny. County Commissioner Mahoney.
Yes.
County Commissioner Nara.
Yes.
County Commissioner Tamara.
Yes.
County Commissioner Director Rios.
Yes. Okay.
Notice that this public hearing was published in the Home Leadership Tribune on November 27th, 2024. This public hearing was authorized at the meeting of the Board of County Commissioners held on November 11th, 2024.
Clerk of Lead, ordinance number 474.
County of Middlesex Bond Ordinance Number 474. Bond ordinance providing for the undertaking of fiscal year 2025 capital improvements at and for certain facilities of Middlesex College located within the county of Middlesex, state of New Jersey, appropriating $3,331,376. Therefore, authorizing the issuance of $3,331,376 bond or notes of the county of Middlesex, state of New Jersey for financing such appropriation, the principal of an interest on the aggregate principal amount, which will be entitled to skating pursuant to Chapter 12 of the laws of New Jersey of 1971, and authorizing public hearings to be held on Thursday, December 5th, 2024 at 6:30 p.m., and publication thereof.
This time, without a meeting to the public to mention, make any comments on ordinance number 474 only. Motion calls for a personal?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Close. Motion carries. A motion to adopt ordinance 474, finally.
Second.
Roll call.
County Commissioner Ashford Barber.
Yes.
County Commissioner Kenny. County Commissioner Mahoney.
Yes.
County Commissioner Nara.
Yes.
County Commissioner Tamara.
Yes.
County Commissioner Director Rios.
Yes.
Notice that this public hearing was published in the Home Leadership Tribune on November 27th, 2024. This public hearing was authorized at the meeting of the Board of County Commissioners held on April 11th, 2024.
Clerk of Lead, ordinance number 475.
County of Middlesex Bond Ordinance Number 475. Bond ordinance providing for the undertaking of various capital improvements at and in for certain facilities of Middlesex College located within the county of Middlesex, state of New Jersey, appropriating $2,750,000. Therefore, authorizing the issuance of $2,750,000 bond or notes of the county of Middlesex, state of New Jersey for financing such appropriation, and authorizing the public hearings to be held on Thursday, December 5th, 2024 at 6:30 p.m., and publication thereof.
This time, I open up the meetings in the public. Anyone have any comments on ordinance number 475?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Close. Motion carries. A motion to adopt ordinance 475, and final read. Roll call.
County Commissioner Ashford Barber. Yes. County Commissioner Kenny. County Commissioner Mahoney.
Yes.
County Commissioner Nara.
Yes.
County Commissioner Tamara.
Yes.
County Commissioner Director Rios.
Yes.
Notice that this public hearing was published in the Home Leadership Tribune on November 27th, 2024. This public hearing was authorized at the meeting of the Board of County Commissioners held on April 11th, 2024.
Clerk of Lead, ordinance number 476.
County of Middlesex, state of New Jersey, ordinance number 2024-476. Bond ordinance providing for various improvements to the Middlesex County Magna Schools in and by the county of Middlesex, New Jersey, appropriating for $6,500,000. Therefore, authorizing the issuance of $6,190,470 bond or notes to the county to finance part of, part of the cost thereof, and further authorizing a public hearing to be held December 5th, 2024 at 6:30 p.m., and authorizing publication thereof.
This time, the public hearing is open to make comments on ordinance number 476.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Close. Motion carries. A motion to adopt ordinance 476. Roll call.
County Commissioner Ashford Barber.
Yes.
County Commissioner Kenny. County Commissioner Mahoney.
Yes.
County Commissioner Nara.
Yes.
County Commissioner Tamara.
Yes.
County Commissioner Director Rios.
Yes.
Notice that this public hearing was published in the Home Leadership Tribune on November 27th, 2024. This public hearing was authorized at the meeting of the Board of County Commissioners held April 11th, 2024.
Clerk of Lead, ordinance 477.
County of Middlesex, state of New Jersey, ordinance number 2024-477. Bond ordinance providing for the design and construction of a new Magna School on the premises of Middlesex College in and by the county of Middlesex, New Jersey, appropriating for $47 million. Therefore, authorizing the issuance of $44,761,900 bond or notes of the county to finance part of the cost. Therefore, in further authorizing the public hearings to be held December 5th, 2024 at 6:30 p.m., and authorizing publication thereof.
This time, I open up the meetings to the public on any comments on ordinance number 477.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Close. Motion carries. A motion to adopt ordinance 477. Roll call.
County Commissioner Ashford Barber.
Yes.
County Commissioner Kenny. County Commissioner Mahoney.
Yes.
County Commissioner Nara.
Yes.
County Commissioner Tamara.
Yes.
County Commissioner Director Rios.
Yes. Reports of Commissioners. Commissioner Ashford Barber.
Nothing to report, Director Rios, thank you.
Commissioner Kenny. Nothing to mention, Director. Commissioner McCollum. I'm sorry. Commissioner Mahoney. Commissioner Deputy Director Nara.
No reports now.
Commissioner Tamara. Thank you. Uh, Mr. Kelsall, any resolutions to be added?
There are none.
Any resolutions to be amended?
There are none.
Resolutions to be held?
There are none.
Any resolutions to be voided?
There are none.
At this time, I open up the meetings to the public on any comments on any resolution listed on. Please state your name and address, and you have five minutes.
Good evening, board members. Charlie Cradaville, I live here in New Brunswick, and I'm the editor of New Brunswick Today. I'll start with 1529. This is to extend the Middlesex County Ride for one year. Can I understand, will this be continuing under the same sort of rules and geography of it, or will there be any geographic expansion in the year or two?
Call the lead.
Thank you, Commissioner Durkic. Charlie, this is to extend the services as we have today.
So the plan is to do a second year of New Brunswick-only service? Okay. Well, I'm, you know, torn a little bit, and I'm pleased to see, you know, the service staying in place. I do think that there's a lot of destinations that New Brunswick residents need to get to outside of town. You know, I know you opened up that health, health facility in East Brunswick. I know the Board of Elections has moved out there as well. I know the, I know that the, you know, the jail is in North Brunswick, and, you know, all those places are, are places that Middlesex County Ride should serve in an ideal world. And even better would be if you had a fixed route, bus system like you used to have. So I think that you need to look at the data that's coming in from the Middlesex County Ride program and figure out how it can best be expanded, and ultimately, in some cases, build upon with the bus system. I'll also ask about 1484, your January 7th meeting. Are you planning to take public comment on resolutions only, or will you go back to having a general public comment at your Reork meeting?
It's going to be resolutions only.
Okay, and for what reason?
We're doing resolutions only.
Okay, that's not a reason. What's the reason?
That's the reason. You're doing resolutions.
You're not going to give a reason?
I answered your question.
You didn't?
Okay.
Okay. Well, I guess folks can draw from that what they think the reason is. I'll, I'll be honest, I think you are being cowardly. I do, I think that, you know, you used to give the public an opportunity to speak to you at that meeting with a big audience, and, you know, you didn't like being in the spotlight and being under pressure. So you canceled it and stopped offering the public that opportunity, and now you can't give a reason for why you're doing it. So correct me if I'm wrong, but that's what I think the reason is. We want that 1489 AVA top right. This is one of your campaign donors that you're giving a contract to, almost $5 million. How do you justify that?
Top rights business. Top rights have given us marketing and outreach for the last seven years, but there's a competitive bid contract that goes out. This is an extension of one year to the contract that was already established.
Well, I'm just going to say, I think the county spends too much money on marketing, and I will say, just to correct the record, this is executives at that for our donors to, I believe, your campaign, your colleagues, your deputy directors' campaign, county Democrats, and it's not a good look that you're giving so much money to this out-of-state company when there's plenty of New Jersey marketing firms that could serve us well, and probably not cost so much. How about Winning Strategies Washington? You're paying them to lobby on transportation policy. Can you point to any additional revenue that's come as a result of their lobbying that wouldn't have come otherwise? Because this is $120,000 we're spending on essentially a, you know, political influence campaign.
Sure. In particular, we've been working with Winning Strategies with the federal funding projects such as the $1.1 million Southern Middlesex Flood Study, and educational issues such as the $300,000 agricultural program, Middlesex Magna Schools, as well as the $1.4 million grant, LWJ Workforce Partnership Program. So they've been significantly valued to us to bring funding, grant funding in to support many of the issues of the county.
Okay, was this competitively bid, or this is just a, like a professional service?
I believe this was a bit as well, I guess.
Yes, it was.
Yes, it's competitive.
Okay, thank you. Uh, far and wide, 1534, can you just tell anyone a quick?
Anyone else in the public?
Can you answer that?
The rule time is up, the question?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Close. Motion carries. Okay, Mr. Kelsall, will you, anyone that has to go on here separately?
I'm prepared. I have numbers 24-155.
Anyone else?
I do.
25?
Yeah.
Anyone else?
Uh, 24-1499 and 24-1503.
Anyone else? That's it? Mr. Kelsall?
Yes, the motion would then be in order to adopt a consent agenda consisting of resolution numbers 24-1485 through resolution 24-1556, excluding resolutions 24-1499, 24-1503, 24-1525, and 24-1555 to be voted upon separately.
Is there a motion? Motion.
Second.
Roll call.
County Commissioner Ashford Barber. Yes. County Commissioner Kenny. County Commissioner Mahoney.
Yes.
County Commissioner Nara.
Yes.
County Commissioner Tamara.
Yes.
County Commissioner Director Rios.
Yes.
Now, Director, it would be appropriate to consider that resolution excluded by Deputy Director Nara, and those are 24-1499 and 24-1503.
Is there a motion to adopt?
Second.
Roll call.
County Commissioner Ashford Barber.
Yes.
County Commissioner Kenny. County Commissioner Mahoney.
Yes.
County Commissioner Nara.
Presenting not voting.
County Commissioner Tamara.
Yes.
County Commissioner Director Rios.
Yes.
Now, Director, it would be appropriate to consider the resolution excluded by Commissioner Tamara, and that's resolution 24-1525.
Is there a motion?
Motion.
Second. Roll call.
County Commissioner Ashford Barber.
Yes.
County Commissioner Kenny. County Commissioner Mahoney.
Yes.
County Commissioner Nara.
Yes.
County Commissioner Tamara.
Presenting not voting.
County Commissioner Director Rios.
Yes.
Now, Deputy Director, it would be appropriate to consider the resolution excluded by Commissioner Mahoney. That's 24-1555.
Is there a motion?
Second.
Roll call.
County Commissioner Ashford Barber.
Yes.
County Commissioner Kenny. County Commissioner Mahoney.
Presenting not voting.
County Commissioner Nara.
Yes.
County Commissioner Tamara.
Yes.
County Commissioner Director Rios.
Yes. This time, I open up the meetings to the public. Please state your name and address, and you have five minutes.
Good evening. My name is Delia. I'm a tenant allocated at New Brunswick Tomorrow, a nonprofit community organization. I am also a member of the New Brunswick Tenants Association. My primary role is to educate tenants about their rights and to assist in the prevention of both legal and illegal evictions. We have identified various violations of state, federal, and local laws throughout the New Brunswick Tomorrow housing headline. It is essential to recognize that many members of our community, especially immigrant families, may be fully aware of their rights. Additionally, tenants often face financial challenges in securing legal representation, and may encounter difficulties accessing legal assistance due to their immigrant status. By providing families with access to legal representation, we can significantly reduce the number of preventable evictions. That is why, several months ago, New Brunswick Tomorrow and the Tenants Association initiated conversations with county representatives, including Joan Carroll, Megan Davy, and other members of the Department of Community Service. During these meetings, we shared our concerns and saw solutions to address this issue, demonstrating our commitment to supporting the community and fostering positive change. We are pleased to announce that they are agreed to join us to our efforts. Melissa Bellman and her team have been actively involved in the SPRING program alongside us. SPRING is a national initiative that helps communities formulate effective plans to extend crucial legal representation to tenants facing eviction. Today, we came together with a clear goal, to estrange their right to counsel for all community. So we'll be here to, to hear testimony from families who have faced eviction or treat eviction, demonstrating the positive difference that access to the legal representation could make in these situations.
Please state your name and address, and you have five minutes.
Okay. Buenas noches, mi nombre es Milagros. Yo vivo en la 97 Fire Street.
Good evening, my name is Milagros, and I live on 97.
97 Fire Street.
Fire Street.
Bueno, yo soy madre soltera. Hace, en el 2018, tuve un desalojo muy injusto.
I'm a single mother and a victim of an illegal eviction. In 2018, I was renting a room where the owner of the property passed away.
Yo rentaba un cuarto con mi niña, y el dueño de la casa falleció. Lo cual, el hijo era un ex policía de la county of New Brunswick. Y nos dijo que tendríamos que desalojar la casa porque la iba a poner en venta como un local comercial de venta de autos.
So, when the owner of the property passed away, his son informed us that he intended to demolish the property and convert it into a commercial space for a car sale business, insisting that we all vacate.
Entonces tanto fue el miedo que nosotros, mis vecinos, tuvieron que irse porque no nos dio opción a nada, no querían ir a corte ni nada. Solamente tuvimos un mes para irnos.
So it was a fear that also drove us to decide to leave, and we had about a month to vacate the property.
En ese entonces pues, él había pegado unos papeles con letra mano, pero yo, como si se entrecomía, sabía que esto no era legal, que todo se va a través de la corte.
So at that time, he had made a couple advertisements on the door, and I knew that that was incorrect.
Bueno, en ese tiempo no había lo que hay ahora, ¿no? Que hay una asociación inquilinos que ahora sí están educando a la gente, bueno, personalmente a mí también, que uno tiene derecho, ¿no? Tenemos, hay muchas, muchas, ¿cómo se dice?, regulaciones.
So at that time of that situation, there was a tenant association, and now there is a tenant association dedicating and educating tenants about their rights.
Entonces ahora sí, en ese tiempo aquí no hay abogado lamentablemente para que haya una protección para la gente hispana, ¿no?, que no tiene documentos.
And also to highlight that there's no current attorney supporting undocumented families or Hispanic families to be able to help them living during these challenges.
Entonces yo creo que la historia habría sido diferente, ¿no? Más que todo para mí y para mi hija porque esto le afectó psicológicamente a mi hija. Ella creció 15 años en esa casa y actualmente ya, ya rentaron esa casa y hay nuevos inquilinos. Pero quiero agradecer a la Asociación de Inquilinos de aquí de New Brunswick, ¿no? Porque están educando a la gente y también, bueno, sí, eso.
And I know that they have rented the property, the unit now, but that situation that happened to me in 2018 would have been different if we had legal assistance. I do want to express that it affected my daughter psychologically, her mental health. We are currently owning that property, but we know that there's other families renting that property.
Y me gustaría que tome en cuenta los testimonios, no solamente el mío, sino de las demás personas que van a dar, y que si, por favor, más adelante se puede conseguir un abogado, ¿no? Porque mayormente los dueños de casa te cobran el abogado de ellos, y yo creo que eso no es justo.
And I would ask him to consider my testimony and the testimony of the rest of the families, to consider how we can work together to, you know, work and provide legal assistance to families who are facing a legal eviction.
Bueno, muchas gracias, espero que tome atención con los testimonios que, bueno, estoy dando en este momento ahora yo y, bueno, en las demás personas, muchas gracias.
Thank you, and I hope you consider my testimony along with the other testimonies that their families will be providing.
Muy buenas noches. Mi nombre es Norvia, Norvia Pérez, vivo en la 261 de la French.
My name is Norvia Pérez, I live at 261 French Street.
Tengo mucho tiempo viviendo en esa dirección. Ya estoy jubilada y recibo un ingreso que, que no es una cosa muy grande. El año pasado, la administración de nuestro apartamento nos envió una notificación de ingreso de renta de 500 dólares, y si no aceptábamos, teníamos que desalojar en 30 días. Nosotros nos asustamos y casi nos mudamos por el temor de que salgan nuestras pertenencias a la calle. Busqué ayuda y me explicaron que la ordenanza del incremento de venta en New Brunswick era solo el 5.5%. Así que contesté la notificación y adexé la ordenanza, y aún sigo viviendo en el apartamento. En base a mi experiencia y de lo que me pasó, tuve que conseguir ayuda y consejos para que no me desalojara.
As mentioned, her name is Norvia. She's a retired woman with a fixed retirement income that has an increase in recent months. Last year, the Last year, the management of her apartment sent her a notice of running increase of $500. The notice stated that if we did not accept the increase, they would have to vacate the apartment within 30 days. They were scared and almost moved out, fearing they would put their belongings on the street. They sought assistance, and after explaining the situation, they learned that the running increase ordinance in Brunswick at that time only allowed for an increase of 5.5%. So then, they responded to the notice, including a copy of the ordinance, and as a result, they were able to stay in their apartment. But based on their experience, she believes it is essential to have legal guidance and support to avoid going to court, which can be exhausting.
Please state your name and address, and you have five minutes.
Buenas tardes. Mi nombre es Mari Bell. Estoy ahora mismo viviendo en la 1 de la Avenue. Hace meses...
Good afternoon. My name is Mari Bell, and I live at 1...
Avenue.
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 Avenue. Hace meses atrás, este, llegó el dueño de la casa diciéndome que tenía que desalojar su casa.
A couple months ago, the landlord arrived to my property, letting me know that I had to evict, had to leave the property.
Solo me dijo que él la tenía que poner en venta y que yo tenía que desalojar su casa.
He only told me that he was going to put it up for sale and that I had to leave the property.
Ahora yo le estoy diciendo a él que estoy buscando y, este, pero no, no encontraba. Estaba un lugar a donde irme.
I have shared with him that I'm currently looking, but I haven't, unfortunately, haven't been able to find a place to move out.
Entonces él me dijo que eso a él no le importaba, que en su casa él podía hacer lo que él quería y llegar cuando él quería.
His response was that he didn't care about that, whether I could find a place, and that I had to evict the place at a given time.
Hace como dos meses atrás empezó a llegar la persona que se está encargando para mostrar la casa para venderla.
About two months ago, the person in charge of showing the home started arriving at our property to be able to show the home to the other families.
Y lo que están haciendo ellos, pues, están entrando cuando ellos quieren, no, no me dejan el horario ni el día, solo llegan cuando ellos quieren, y la verdad, eso es algo, fue muy fuerte para mí, al ver esas actitudes y decidí, digo, qué hago, qué yo puedo hacer, y entonces, pues, fue así como yo llegué a esta organización de New Brunswick Tomorrow.
And at that time, when they started arriving at any time that they wanted, for me, it was frustrating because they would arrive at any time without proper notice, and it was at that time that I decided to seek out for assistance, and I came across New Brunswick Tomorrow and the New Brunswick Tenants Association.
Me asusté mucho porque tengo niños, estoy viviendo con mis hijos solamente. Ahora él me dijo, si tú no te vas, este, tenemos que llegar a corte, tú tienes que pagarlos, honorarlos de mi abogado.
I got very scared as well because I have kids, and having kids, I'm concerned for their well-being. But the other thing that he mentioned was that if we ended up going to court, that I was going to be responsible in paying all the fees inquired for going to court.
Hace dos semanas atrás me dijo que la casa ya estaba en trato y que la, el nuevo dueño, este, iba a comprar esta casa para rentarla, pero que le aumentaría el monto a 3,000 dólares.
About two weeks ago, he informed me that they actually are under contract, so there's a potential buyer, and that the buyer that was going to acquire the property was going to rent it, however, they were going to increase the rent amount to 3,000 dollars.
Ahora yo pienso que es algo, es un desalojo injusto porque, porque lo que ellos quieren es sacar más dinero de la renta, a ellos no les importa si son familias con hijos pequeños o hijos grandes, no les importa separarlo, por la varicia, lo que ellos quieren es ganar más dinero.
Now, for me, I find it very challenging, given the situation that they're trying to evict me so that they can rent the property to somebody else, increase their rents, and henceforth not consider, you know, the families that had been residing there for a while.
Ahora mismo yo lo que estoy haciendo es buscar, pero realmente todo está demasiado elevado de precio. Tengo que juntar de nuevo para otro depósito, para otro primer mes de renta, y la verdad, ha habido ocasiones que me agarró como ansiedad de decir, ¿a dónde? Yo no quiero parar en la calle por, por la varicia de ellos, y realmente digo, sí, sí se necesita un abogado, porque no solo yo estoy pasando de muchas familias, más y por miedo se salen y no les importa ir a rentar una sala o un cuarto, pero pienso que eso es un poco injusto, y si, si aquí se pudiera tomar en cuenta y proveer un abogado sería un alivio para nosotros que pasamos por esas situaciones.
And so I'm currently experiencing a lot of uncertainty, and while I'm looking for a new place to move out, it's very hard because even coming up with the security amount for a new home is complicated, and I'm not the only family facing, facing those struggles or those challenges. So it's definitely, you know, once again, expressing the opportunity to work together to provide that legal assistance help that can help families mediate these kind of situations.
Muchas gracias por su atención.
Thank you so much for your attention.
Please state your name and address, and you have five minutes.
Good evening. My name is Christina Bares. I live in New Brunswick for 24 years. Soy miembro activo del Proyecto Esperanza y Asociación de Inquilinos. En estos momentos también estoy recibiendo notificación de mi arrendador para desalojarme en el apartamento que voy viviendo durante 23 años. Nuestros testimonios son muestras de la crisis de vivienda que estamos atravesando nuestra comunidad. Yo quiero compartir algunos datos importantes en relación a esta crisis de vivienda.
My name is Christina, and I'm a member of the Tenants Association. I'm currently receiving notices from my landlord to vacate the apartment that has been my home for over 25 years. Our experiences highlight the housing crisis affecting our community. I want to share some important information regarding the crisis. These testimonies represent just a small fraction of the eviction cases in Middlesex communities so far.
Estos testimonios representan una pequeña fracción de los casos de desalojo en la comunidad de Middlesex. Hasta el momento, en este año 2024, se han presentado más de 10,000 casos de desalojo en corte del condado.
So far in 2024, over 10,000 eviction cases have been filed in county court.
Una coalición de abogados de inquilinos y universidades llevaron a cabo recientemente una investigación y después de revisar 1,308 quejas incluidas una de nuestro condado de New Jersey, la coalición encontró deficiencias y errores importantes en el proceso de desalojo residencial.
A coalition of tenant attorneys and universities conducted an investigation and reviewed 1,378 complaints, including samples from every county in New Jersey. They found significant deficiencies and errors in the residential eviction process.
El 60% de las quejas de desalojo representadas por los propietarios contenían al menos una deficiencia legal. El 15% de las quejas presentadas tenían tres o más deficiencias legales, y los tribunales emitieron avisos de deficiencias en solo 11% de los casos en que los propietarios habían presentado quejas por deficiencias.
69% of eviction complaints filed by landlords contain at least one legal deficiency. 15% of the complaints filed had three or more legal deficiencies. Courts issued notices of deficiencies in only 11% of cases where homeowners filed deficiency complaints.
Por esas razones y por algunas de las experiencias que escucharon en los testimonios esta noche, les pedimos el apoyo a nuestro esfuerzo y en los próximos meses trabajar con nuestros socios para desarrollar recomendaciones para un plan que esperamos presentarles a ustedes en mayo o junio, para que podamos trabajar juntos para conseguir representación legal y detener los abusos y violaciones en nuestros derechos como inquilinos.
For these reasons, and based on the experiences you heard in tonight's testimonies, we ask for your support in our efforts. In the next few months, we will work with our partners to develop recommendations for our plan that we hope to present to you in May or June, so we can work together to secure legal representation and put an end to the abuses and violations of our rights as tenants. Thank you.
Please state your name and address, and you have five minutes.
Benjamin Guy, 35th Pike Drive, living in Somerset. But I came here probably about two, uh, two months ago about the same, uh, about the same thing. One is, just to make a recommendation, just first off, I'm going to tell you, if you've got these problems now, you're going to have a bigger problem for the next five years. And the reason why I'm saying that is because the Affordable Housing Study came out, right? And everybody knows what that is. So, the reason why I'm saying this is because if you do have a petition, you have an opportunity to fix this and get a system in place right now. I would ask you guys to look at your, look at the partnership with the New Brunswick, City of New Brunswick, and have a conversation about what's left in the American Rescue Plan, hire, hire a bunch of legal counsel, and just go through all these cases, because this is going to back up the system, back up the court system, it's going to make it look real bad at all. It's been looking bad for you guys because they're coming to your meeting. Half the issues that are here, it had nothing to do with you guys, but it's the backup because of that, because of the affordable housing issue. And the reason why I'm coming to this issue right now is because with the study that's coming out, between, between my county and your county, we're deficient about 11,000 housing, housing people. That was actually a study that was actually issued out during the time frame. Now, it might be discrepancy, but that's what's issued out from the State Department, right? In, in Middlesex County, I think it's 6,500 units that's short. Specifically, the city of New Brunswick is about 1,200, 1,200 affordable housing units that's actually short, based on the study. And this has been appropriated for the last five, seven years, right? And it's going to continue because the Affordable Housing Study just came out and it's getting worse from 2025 to 2035, right? Now, we know specifically in certain parts, there's nowhere else to build. There's no else you can do. Only thing you can do is build Scottscreppers or whatever out of that, but that's mostly market rate. Nobody's regulating this portion, so you have a backlash to some of the stuff that's going on. So, the question is, is that, one is, what are you guys going to think about doing and having a, having a serious conversation, because it's not going to go nowhere. This is going to actually come up in the governor's race. And because of the infrastructure bill, it's going to be piped line down. So, they already said they're going to try to build 3 million new houses, whatever, whatever's going on. In your specific cap area, it's too, some of this stuff is too dense, so it's got to be a conversation that's going to be had with these cities going forward now. And all I'm saying is that get, get ahead of it rather than behind. And the reason why I'm bringing this up is because I made this specific point last time about asking what was going on with 27, right? We're tearing down affordable housing, and then we're deficient, and then we're going to add to the compilation problem of what's already deficient. Something doesn't make sense. And I'm just asking a question early before it gets chaotic, before people get, before it gets civil unrest and people really get violent about it. Because it's something like this, crime is created because there's no shelter. That's why you have crime. If you have, if somebody can go home, be peaceful, and eat a good meal, they're going to be, they're going to be less occupied to do anything else. There's a problem. You guys need to be aware of it. You need to fix it, and like I said again, you need to work with these people as much possible. Now, I'm just saying this as a first suggestion, because the money got to be spent before you send any federal money back, between City of New Brunswick and Middlesex. If you have not spent it, I suggest you, you do the council thing, just like when COVID happened. Spend part of your money on the American Rescue Plan, fix these issues, and get ahead of it and work on the plan to actually fix, fix the plan going forward. That is my time. I'm going to leave in a moment. Thank you.
Thank you. Please state your name and address, and you have five minutes.
Good evening. Charlie Crandall, once again, New Brunswick, New Brunswick today. I'm going to start by saying first thank you to everyone for sharing their stories with the board. I know it can be difficult to share traumatic and troubling situations like these, but you public officials need to hear it, and I think that's why you need general public comment at every one of your meetings, and it's wrong for you to cancel it at any of them. I, correct me if I'm wrong, you're all homeowners, right? None of you are renters?
I live in Middlesex County.
I, I would hope so. But I'm, I'm asking that because I know there used to be a renter on the board like, like great Ken Armwood, and, and I thought it was good that there was a renter on the board, and at this time, there's not one, and so I think it's extra important that you listen to these folks who are coming and telling you what's going on in New Brunswick. And when you're there, at your, you know, celebrating yourself at the January 7th meeting, you look out at the crowd of wealthy people, politicians, and, and, you know, lawyers and judges, remember that the folks who aren't there, the ones that you're silencing, did come to one of your meetings and told you what's going on here. I hope that you'll think, after all these years in power, how can this still be happening? And what can I, Ron Rios, do to make it better and alleviate the suffering? And I hope that you'll avail yourself of, of the people that have done research and are coming to you, and I hope you'll meet with them outside of the meetings and give them your ear and, and not just ignore this. Homelessness is on the rise in Middlesex County, correct? The latest numbers?
The latest, the actual point in time numbers for 2024 actually went slightly down. But we do anticipate them going up just because of everything else everyone talks about. But I do want to make sure you understand, Charlie, when they started, the testimonies, we are actively participating with them, trying to create a right to counsel program. So I don't want you to think it's something that's being ignored. We have actively, we have a team from our Housing and Community Development Division that took part in the training and continues to work with the Middlesex County, work through, along with Central Jersey, Central Jersey Legal Services, as well as the Blast School with the New Brunswick Tomorrow and the Tenants Association.
Thank you. I'm glad you're working with them, and I hope that the elected officials themselves will actually get, join in on that and, and, and meet with them if you haven't already done so. The point I'm trying to get to here, and I believe homelessness is on the rise in New Brunswick, is that correct?
I can't answer that. I don't know.
I have to look at the numbers.
Okay. And so, why then are there 30% less beds at New Brunswick's only Code Blue Warming Center this season?
I can't answer that. I don't know. I don't work directly with them.
Okay. Could you, could you refer the question to somebody who does?
I don't know those numbers. I, I don't work directly with them.
I'm, I'm telling you, I mean, at the council meeting last night, the, a lot of people came out because they're upset that there used to be more beds, and now there's only 20 beds. So for all the homeless people in New Brunswick, I think the number's over 150. There are, on a cold night, only when it's the coldest of cold nights do they open the place, and they only have 20 beds. We need more beds. We need more centers. We need public restrooms. There's so much that we need, and, you know, the folks that are speaking about right to counsel are 100% correct. We need that too. But there's folks that are even worse off that aren't here and are coming to the meetings, and you need to, you represent them too. They're your constituents, and so I would appreciate if you would look into this. Can you ask the person who's in charge of Code Blue why there's 30% less beds this year?
Of course. I, I, I will speak to Megan and Melissa, and we will have a thorough conversation on what is happening, and either one of them will get back to you.
Great, great. I'll look forward to that. I, I won't, you know, apologies, because I neglected to, to proactively share the video of the person getting kicked out of your rally that I promised to share, so I will share that. I won't ask you about it tonight, but I do have to ask you if you have any comment on my other video of Edison Council meeting where a man was ejected from the meeting by police for holding an American flag. Do you have any comment on that? Does any of the commissioners have any comment on that? Is that appropriate?
I'm not going to comment.
Okay. Well, I'll just put you on notice, because I know, I came here to tell you about the civil rights abuses of Edison Police earlier this year, and not one member of this board publicly condemned what they did to the bus of immigrants on New Year's Day. And now we're seeing the police being abused in government meetings there, and you still won't say a word about it. Shame on you. You should speak up and call it out. We deserve better, and I'll just end by saying I hope everybody here, including all the board, have a very happy and healthy holiday season.
Please state your name and address, and you have five minutes.
Hi. Hi, my name is Lena Whitehead, Coach Lena, and I am from, my address is 237 New Brunswick Avenue, Perthamboy, New Jersey. Happy holidays, everyone. I wanted to say that, and I'm glad that today I was here. Many of you know me as I am a leader in the community and have life coaching practice here and uplift the community during many of events. This year, I have won the Penny Valley Award, Boy Scouts of America, and an NAACP National Award this year. Why I'm here today specifically because I was encouraged by the community to come talk about a great day, and I see that National Homeless Memorial Person's Day is on December 21st. So I wanted to invite you guys personally to our community events. This year, like last year, we had two simultaneous sites for Homeless Memorial Day, and I thought it was fantastic. One in Perthamboy and one in New Brunswick, where the hardest hit homelessness is being affected in the county. As a longtime resident of New Brunswick, holding various roles in the community, and also being a social worker, I do understand how things go during the holiday, and I want this to be a joyous occasion. I partnered with a group of people in the community who saw last year how many people this was very heartfelt, where we were able to serve over 120 people in uplifting memorial lives, those who lost their life to homelessness. Not only that, we were able to go in the... Not only that, we were able to go in the National Homeless Indexes having an event for Middlesex County and Perthamboy. The county does have an event that I do support very often and often donate and as a member of the community also involved. I just wanted to invite everybody here to come check out some of our events in the community where we reach a great demographic and people that are always not represented in the county. I, it's a great time, it's fun, it's about giving back and uplifting these individuals who may not have that every day. We tend to pass a lot of the people on the roads here and find, in our hearts, to find money and resources for them. And I know as community leaders, sometimes we shake our heads because we don't understand how certain, certain things roll. Well, Sharpen Minds has decided to uplift and create a space for individuals which is very safe, where we're able to hand out and ask them the things that they need in the community. We were able to provide them, literally, this was so heartwarming why I've come down here because the community asked me to come down here really bad because at this point, local organizations and small businesses were dropping off things and literally giving people the shoes and coats off of their back. Now, this is dear to me because my family grew, grew up in this town and some of them weren't, they experienced, it's sad for me, experienced homelessness. And I have been able to do a lot, but a lot of our initiatives through Sharpen Minds is because it directly hit people that are dear to me, my neighbors, as I grew up in Rogerson Village and in Hampton Club on Edpis Road, as I played on the basketball courts and had the opportunity to come from New Brunswick and be a professional basketball player. So that's why I'm back at my community uplifting down on Redson Avenue, down where the most vulnerable are and we understand that. So this is a plea to have you guys come down and check out our events, maybe sometimes donate, but just know that we're here in the community and we're also a part of encouraging and empowering people and that's what we're all about. So thank you, happy holidays. And I have a flyer to show you that we have three sites, one in Somerset, one in Perthamboy and one in New Brunswick. So thank you again. We will have a Code Drive December 14th as a lot of small businesses has designated their areas as drop-off areas because so many people in the community are willing to do this. And if you guys didn't know, when I won the Boy Scouts of America, we have been able to put over a quarter of a million dollars between Middlesex County and Miami, Florida. So I think that Sharpen Minds is something that, you know, that you guys, it's worth checking out. Whether you saw me at a Juneteenth event or hosting, you know that community means unity and I'm here to say that. Thank you, guys.